Mr. Mayor, ready to go when you are, sir?
Okay, Patricia, are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay, I'd like to call the order, our special meeting of the Stanton City Council for March the 7th. If you'll please all rise for the flag. Mr. Torres, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Ready, begin.
Thank you. Okay, Patricia, since I don't have my agenda, you want to go ahead and take over, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, will do. We'll move on to item four, which is roll call. Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Councilmember Torres?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
There.
Mayor Proton Pan?
Yeah.
And Mayor Schaubert, are you here?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the special orders of the day, which is to do business. And that would be my report, Mr. Mayor and Council. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. We have before you this evening, City Council consideration for one vacancy on Stanton Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission, three vacancies on the Stanton Plan Commission, and three vacancies on the Stanton Father's Aid Committee. For the city's municipal code, it requires submission of applications and interviews prior to appointment. The City Council by majority vote may also waive the requirement to interview persons previously appointed by the City Council and who are requesting your appointments on their term. The Speaker's office has received a total of 16 applications. Out of the 16 applications, we also received one application that was submitted after the publicly notice closing period and was disqualified, which that is recorded in your set for us all. This evening, we have 13 applicants are present this evening for their interviews. The appointment process will go as follows. Each applicant will be called to the podium. The applicants were sent via email, three questions to answer as part of the interview process. A copy of the applicant's responses have been provided to you via email and is also provided to people on the dial this evening. In addition to the email questions, the interview process will then be opened to the City Council should each of you have any additional questions to ask the applicants. Once the interview has concluded, the applicant will be asked to have a seat while the next applicant is called to the podium for his or her interview. Once interviews have concluded for all applicants, I will then proceed to the nomination portion of the process. That concludes staff's report. Mr. Mayor and Council, I will now begin with the interview portion of the process for the Parks, Recreation and Community Services Commission. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Greg Heinz to the podium. Mr. Heinz, thank you so much for your attendance this evening. Would you proceed your questionnaire? I will now open it to the council members to ask any questions that they may have. Would you like to, how about I just give an order, would that be okay with everyone? Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Taylor?
Where do you live in the city?
I live on Syracuse Avenue between Knott Avenue and Western.
Mrs. Ash lives on that area of the street.
She's my neighbor down the street.
I live just on the other side of, I mean, not.
So that would be the sort of Cypress side.
Sort of Cypress, but Stanton.
Yeah.
We're really state. How long you lived in the city?
I came to Stanton the first time in 1975. Lived here for a couple of years, took some time off to see the world while I was in the Navy.
Did you live at all, from our homeless, this problem?
Very little. Once in a while, we'll see somebody come down the street, but it's not popular thoroughfare for the homeless. So we've had more parking issues than we've had homeless issues.
We're gonna be looking at parking.
Okay. Hi.
Hello.
What's your vision, like your five-year vision for the Parks and Rec Department? What would you love to see done if money wasn't always such a pressing issue?
I spent some time on this when I was filling out my questionnaire. And to be honest, I don't have a futuristic view. I'm more of a STEM person rather than, I don't know, a neighborhood person. But the things that I identified on the questionnaire had to do with ongoing maintenance for all of our facilities in parks where I sit communities services. And that led to a couple of issues which you will see on my questionnaire. I also think it's very good if we can get more public and also private grant. If strings that are attached are not to owners. That would give us an opportunity to expand in ways to help the community. But I don't feel that I see enough of a community to say that I understand everything that's going on in every corner of the city. I tend to be local to my little neighborhood and not the folks down south or people on the other side, fine, I know them. So that's just my honest way of saying that I don't really have a five-year vision for the entire community other than in administrative terms.
Good.
Thanks.
So I've seen that you've served on the House of Recommissions since 2017. And what would you say is your biggest accomplishment on recognition or what is your legacy?
Well, as far as accomplishments go, the Parks and Rec Community Services Commission is advisory. So it doesn't really have the ability to do anything. It can make some referrals and it can make some light decisions regarding, say, patterns that go into athletic equipment or whatever issues might be discretionary for the commission. But as far as successes, all I can say is I've tried to fight for safety. My pet project is better lighting for the playground equipment at Stanton Central Park and After Dark. There's lighting on the paths, there's lighting on the fields, but when night comes, the loopholes that are there by the train and the playground equipment, you can't see your kids. I think that that's not a safety issue, so. That's the predominant thing. The other items that are important to me were on the questionnaire. And I don't want to waste the commission's time, the council's time reiterating those, but safety is that one item.
Thank you so much. Mr. Schaubert, do you have any questions for Mr. Heinz this evening?
I just want to compliment him and his wife Ellen. They work our park every night and I see them there quite a bit. And we've had a lot of conversations on how we can make improvements and his suggestions are very good. I know that he has a good feeling about our park system. He has a love for it. I know that he has done an outstanding job as one of our commissioners. I would like to ask him one simple question. If there's one thing that we would like to add to any of our parks, because I know you've been to all of them, what's the one thing that you would like to add to one park that might be a benefit to our community?
You've got me with that one. I think I would have to give it some thought. There's no one thing that comes to mind immediately, so I think I'd have to give that careful consideration. I just don't have an answer off the top of my head for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Kirk. Continue.
Mr.?
Looks like it froze. Oh, he's back.
Mr. Mayor, any further questions? Mr. Mayor, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but your mouth, go ahead.
Any further questions?
I can't understand what you're saying.
Do you have any further questions?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, we'd like to apologize to the council, the packet that we provided to you for three of the applicants has duplicative information. We're rectifying that right now and we will get you additional updated application. So that's everything from us, Ryan, thank you so much. And our next candidate, the applicant is correct in your packet, so I'd like to invite up candidate Annie Wong-Fon.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Annie, Annie Fan. So do you want us to answer your question first?
Yes, thank you so much, my apologies. We had a malfunction with our media combined. So Torres, any questions for us, yeah?
Yeah, if you're in your questionnaire, is it that you recently worked with the Community Services Director to apply for funding through more tennis courts? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
That's correct. One of the big issues I want to bring the aware of everyone, that is our tennis court. That is has been unjust, unmechanic, even the Stanton Central Park have remodels in 2016, but the tennis court is just left there. So we have lots of issue for the safety. So that's why, as a tennis player, I have spent a lot of time there. So I know that is what wrong with it. So and I also have the connection with the USDA. And she is the director of community tennis. It's been the program to support local tennis from the public school, from the city, so they can provide a portion of funding for us. But the most important is that they provide professional knowledge. So that is how we can do it the correct way. So in that one, I already forward to the director, the application. So and we are working on that. So hopefully that is on, I said, when you working on a budget, we already working on the submitted for 300,000. And hopefully at that time, when you approve it and combine with the funding from the USDA, we will have a new tennis court for everyone.
Great. Do you mind explaining the condition of the passports, please? And what you would like to do to fix it?
Say it again, please.
Can you please let us know the conditions of the passports and what you would do to fix it?
Sure. Right now, that is they have a lot of ground line. And when raining, they it's very bad, the water stay there with ten water. And we have a problem about fencing, so dust and trash from the railroad can pour over. And we don't have the divider between causes. So let's say when we are playing and the ball from another court come over, that is everyone has to stop and we start the game all over. So and to me, the most important that is the safety, because the service is very bad. Especially that is children and especially with the senior. Because of the club, I'm a member with, we have almost 50 members and most of them that is a senior. So that is not good for us. So what we, I really, really, that is, yeah, as a goal for me, as I become a commissioner, is to get the tennis court remodel, resurface up to the current center of USDA.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I'm with you.
Does your youth, something need or lightings need or?
Now, when I involved to the activity of the city, that is I can see to the city and I can become a connection with that is the one using the park and the city.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions? Mr. Mayor, can you hear us? Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions for Ms. Fan? I think he is frozen. There you go. Hi, Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions for Ms. Fan? Mr. Mayor?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Do you have any questions?
Hello? Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
Okay, I think that's on your end with the speakers. Can you still hear me right now? And you might have a connection issue.
The rest of the Zoom call can hear you.
Mr. Mayor has left the meeting. I'll try to log in one more time.
We did a little more general wordings.
I know. That's also a function of what machine.
Or edge of the branches and it's going to be the brain of the opposite.
So Council, I haven't seen you in a while. Okay, so at this time, to not prevent any further delays, we'll move on to the next candidate. Ms. Fan, thank you so much and I appreciate your time and your patience with us during this technology. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Hong Chan to the podium. Thank you, sir. So Mr. Chan just arrived and has provided his questionnaire this evening, so did not come in advance. I'll provide that to you now. Thank you for printing those for us, sir.
Evening, Council.
Okay, so at this time, we'll have the council review that for a minute and then we'll start with Mr. Torres for any questions that he may have for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, welcome back. Can you hear me, sir?
Hello?
Mr. Mayor, could you just do a quick hello for me to confirm your attendance? Okay. Mr. Torres, whenever you're ready, go ahead, sir.
Great. In one of your goals, you said that you wanted to have language accessibility. Could you please explain that a little more?
I realize that the city of Stanton is a diverse community. We do have a minority group. The reason why I bring it up because obviously we want our citizens to utilize the power of the public service. And certainly we have, like Harry Dawson, his relative family. But if the parents, they may not fully understand the safety aspect of it. Maybe they don't actively bring their kid out and use it. Even if they bring it out and they are not fully aware of the safety procedure or instruction regarding that particular playground. It may be a we can get our residents to utilize our resource more, so that way we can get more value out of whatever we invest in.
I agree. Another thing you mentioned is you want affordable programs for all residents. Can you just come back?
We have limited budget. Every city has a limited budget. How we use it to get the most out of it. So engaging the community very expensive band to come and perform on stage. But we can do very interactive activity that can be culturally related or family oriented that will bring the community out. Because through the COVID, there's a lot of isolation and we need that connection. We build a community through connection and interaction and to have an understanding from ethnic groups. We need that social engagement. So family oriented activities, it costs a lot. All that crap bring out a lot of kids. But through that, kids don't have boundary on culture and language. When they come and they engage, they, oh, that's my school friend. I didn't know you live next door. Now we gotta be friends, we hang out. That grow upon and make our community also safe for me. And now they know each other. So let's say a stranger's coming in, they go, wait, wait, how come he? What would that pose, that specifically wrong, this really, those have been bringing the community together.
I agree, thank you.
Thank you.
I assume you live near Harry Dawson Park?
It's actually walking this thing because I live on Sereno's and Court Street, which we go down from there and then we cross over and right there is the park. So we've been using that before COVID, we were using that park for both my kid's birthday celebration. It's small, it's safe, and it have a lot of kid friendly. And what we know there is just like a little community where all the kid from the neighborhood are coming out. So this is very, I would say, the city made a good investment in development, cut it into a very kid friendly. And that's what I would like to see throughout the city.
Have you and your family attended any events or been to Stanton Central Park?
Yes. Actually, my kids spend a lot of time with their grandpa over at the Stanton Central Park, especially in the summer when we have the movie night.
Yeah.
They always want to go. So either me or my dad, we may arrange it, we always take them there. And it's something like that, that's what I mean by affordability, right? It doesn't cost a lot. And we can also pay for those that spend through having vendor or boot or their And we can also pay for those that spend through having vendor or boot or that making option. By that, they will bring the community out and they utilize the investment we put in.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sticking with my vision, five-year future goals for the Parks and Recreation Department. I thought your, Donald agreed with you, I think your multiple languages for the parks is a good idea. But what else do you see for a five-year vision on the parks that you would like to see implemented?
My number one goal is minimize spending but maximize value. And for that, utilize our existing infrastructure, have more community engaged activity, continue to do what we're good at. Like for example, summer movie night at the park, continue to do that. And we have to also consider make, Stanton Central Park is a great park. We put a lot of money into that. So it does centralize, bring everyone together, but not everyone have the opportunity to go there. So sometimes we need to rotate and consider. Hollandback is actually a great open space. There's opportunity there to grow that, so that side of the community. So walking distance for someone to enjoy a movie night there instead of have to drive across each of our two sides to Stanton Central Park. We grow our existing infrastructure as we can and get the community engaged more. So a lot more people know where we strategically have parked in different small community. Let's bring awareness to them. We have senior citizens live in that complex right next to Hollandback. So walking distance. Make it, it doesn't have to be a central park, but make it where they come out. They don't have to run the treadmill, do that side. They can come out there with a boat, enjoy the outdoor space, open energy environment and see that. Those are the engagement component that I would like to see in parking services. It doesn't have to be invest $5 million and build a new playground. But get our people to come out, use the park. And from there, we can strategically allocate our resources. Realize more senior citizens utilize that park and will adapt to that need. Rather than like if we go out, invest money and to build things and realize we're not being used. I'm not saying we done that, but that's my vision. Because we are a small city, we use our resources precisely. Get our citizen, our resident, maximize their value.
So the two people who interviewed before you are existing Parks and Rec commissioners. You're familiar to us here. Can you tell us about yourself personally and what you do and, you know, what you're involved in and why you wanna be a commissioner?
So I moved to City of Stanton in 2008. I start family in 2010. My kid born in Stanton, grew up in Stanton. So I have a better interest in them growing up in a safe community. But before that, since 2000, I've been an adult volunteer for the scout movement, with the Boy Scout America and the Vietnamese community, scouting community. And in 2008, I started also involved with the Girl Scout, a volunteer as a girl scout, adult leader to help support the community also. So youth engagement have been part of my life. I also actively engaged with the Union of Vietnamese Student Association and they do have the Ted Festival every year. And I am part of the organizing committee of the Cultural Village since 2004. And every year, that becomes a part of Ted Festival. You remember before, they used to be having it at the right next to Moser Grand at the Garden Grove Park. And that's a major attraction, bring in 50,000 to 100,000 attendees. So my experience dealing, working with people, especially the youth. That is the experience, that's something I can offer. Because the thing we invest in our community actually impacting the youth more. They have a longer duration of use. And then we make them feel like this, they're home, they will stay here, they will settle here, they will buy an house here. They spend money, they reinvest into the community. So my experience working with different young organizations and it will need to make a connection and continue to propagate message as the youth. They can utilize our resources, but at the same time, they contribute to volunteerism. High school age is a prime age for volunteering. Park Recreation, we have a lot of available opportunity out there and engage them. For a park, if we wanna potentially, it doesn't have to spend money. How about there are students in the scouting community, they do volunteer, they do service contributing. We offer them opportunity, they come, they bring their volunteer, they fundraise, they spend that money. They put it to our park, they kind that tree, they create that bench. That's the service they can bring. We offer them the opportunity. Now they feel like they all part of that park. They are part of the, within that city, the resident, the service community.
So you're talking a lot about getting kids to give back and volunteer. Do you have any examples of, you know, kids that you've worked with that have volunteered in Stanton and given back to Stanton?
In the past, I do have a few scouts actually in Stanton. One of, her name is one of the person who was a scout. She lived right behind Hornwood and Rosetta Tiga. So she was also part of the initiative development and one of the project who actually contributed to the parks. So I will wanna advise them. So my wish is that we have more of those student scouting who are actually gonna be doing more service project in Stanton rather than they're gonna go to Garden Grove or Moscow Park or Final Valley or go to their other network, provide those services.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Trent, what's your favorite park in Stanton and why?
Earlier, I loved Harrison, Harry Dawson Park, that's where my kid went. But after we opened the Stanton Central Park, they went there a lot more. But my original impression was the Stanton Park right here. It was actually a great hour, warm before we have the Stanton Central Park over there. I took my kid here for scooter and biking. So honestly, I don't have a favorite or favorite. But Harry Dawson and Stanton Central Park are the two main attractions that I'm very impressed about. And I would like to see similar impression at other parks for the community.
And I know that you've been to most of our parks. What's one thing that you would like to see brought into our four parks you would feel be most beneficial to the city?
So it's part of a, sort of a unique community, like earlier I mentioned Hollandback. There's a lot of open space, there's opportunity to grow it. And there is a senior complex right next to the park. So what to look at? Are they gonna be able to do things the same as Harry Dawson? They don't, they then need a little bit different than the community right around Harry Dawson. So I wouldn't give a blanket suggestion. But the first approach would be to see one underneath of the walking distance resident right around the park. Maybe a short survey or a simple engagement, community engagement activity to see more coming out. And from that, we strategize and develop. But obviously, Hollandback can hopefully have more shade and environment so that they can come out more. Because I remember with the drought, the grass was completely brown, right? And then that literally being abandoned. It's something that we can find opportunity to make it better. So that the resident, right, either side of the park and even across the street, just that simple road right there, we don't have a crosswalk. And if the people on the other side, a lot of the passing, if they want to use our Hollandback, if they either cross down the, they'll swing back. I'm not gonna walk that distance to, honestly, to use that park. Or if they're gonna go all the way down to, I know they are turning around. But if we have a control line, if you just allow that should walk across, make it safe, then more people can use it. That's just one example. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Trent.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. We appreciate your time. I'd like, at this time, I'd like to invite Miss Molly Berlin. Well, I do not see the audience receiving, but she did send an application of her question. So if it's okay with that, so I'll move on to the next applicant. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. O'Neil, to the podium, please. And Mr. Mayor, once again, we're counting on the doors for any questions.
Yeah, what are some issues that you'd like to address? Just want to increase participation and overall civic engagement. I think Parks and Rec, especially parks, are one of the first things that families come and come to interact with in the city. So I think it's great that we have a bunch of signs and flyers and stuff to direct the people. But I think we can do a bigger effort by having liaisons at the parks. That way they have, are able to create relationships with the people directly and the people are city council participating and contributing to the city. Thank you. And do you mind telling us a little bit more about yourself as a council?
Yeah, of course. I'm a member of District Green and Mr. Taylor's district. Recently moved here, going for four years. I moved from next door to Garden Grove. I grew up there pretty much my whole life. But we moved over here with my family, we bought a time home over in Bradford Place. And we've been living there ever since, you know. And I think it's been a great experience living here, just seeing how much opportunity there is for development and just for people. There's a lot of opportunities that we can really help flourish here in the city. And, you know, I want to help, contribute my skills and whatever I can to make this city successful.
Thank you.
Grab for the place, what's the park that's close?
Personally, it's one of my favorites. I know that question's gonna come up a little bit later. But I have personal bias towards it. I grew up skateboarding. So, you know, they have the skate park right there. So whenever I have time, I ride my board over there and, you know, or sometimes even kick the soccer ball over there. You know, there's plenty of open space over there. There is some issues, you know, I know with the lighting and stuff. But, you know, I think through participation, we can get people out here to really help, you know, show you folks how much these parks are using and, you know, get stuff going on there.
Can you tell me what vision you would have five years out for Stanton Parks? What you'd like to see other than what you've already mentioned?
Yeah, definitely. As I said, on top of participation, would like to see a lot more opportunities offered for the younger people. For example, I think we could use our parks for a couple of events that do food trucks. You know, I think those things are bringing a lot of people out. And as a previous candidate for the position mentioned, it's a good spot. It's a good opportunity to help build, bring people together and socialize. As I just mentioned, I think civic engagement depends a lot on people building relationships, having conversations and, you know, just continuous communication. That's what, you know, builds stronger bond between one each other. And I think I would wanna see us, see these citizens group back, you know, see more participants, participate in the citizens academies, city council. Increase the numbers in our rosters for the education programs that we already have. You know, I think they're great. The movie nights, the tea nights out, they're super cool. But I think we can definitely increase participation in those.
I noticed that you have participated in citizens academy.
Yes.
Can you give me any feedback on what you thought it was like and how you valued it?
It went by way too quick. I honestly have a big nerd for like policy, government, so I truly loved it. I only missed one session just because I think I was sick or had work. But other than that, I got a great opportunity to be able to learn directly from the people that manage the departments. You know, got to meet them face to face. Some of them still recognize me, so that's pretty cool. You know, so other than that, you know, I think it's another great thing about those programs. They help you bring you closer to the people that serve you, you know. So I think it's, I truly enjoyed it and I would recommend it to anyone else like I have it.
I noticed one of the things you emphasized in your questionnaire was outreach and engagement, especially the hard-to-reach communities and increasing resident participation. Can you elaborate on how we can do that better and what you would suggest?
Yeah, definitely. I included on my application that we can definitely offer more things in different languages. I know it's one of the things that a previous candidate brought up. I think it's crucial that we notice, you know, we pick up on these demographic shifts that our county is experiencing. It's not gonna stop, you know? I think we clearly see that, you know, with the new leaders coming up on the dais, not just here, but across different cities. So I think it's very important that we pay attention to that and other people like other people that have come living in Stanton. I think we need to show them that, you know, we love, we love that we're here.
And how do we do that?
By, again, you know, offering perhaps, I mentioned the citizens academy, maybe offering it in other language, Spanish, Vietnamese, even a youth program. I know right here, probably there's a lot of folks that were interested that might not have been a little bit of, I guess, discouraged from applying because they thought it was a bit of egg for older people, you know? But I think younger demographic folks do feel left out. And I think if we can offer it to them, it would also foster new leadership for the future.
And what's the best medium to reach these hard-to-reach populations? Besides the language aspect, how do we actually get them, you know, they're probably not gonna open our Facebook page and, you know, or go to our city website. Or they might not be checking the city manager's newsletter or be subscribed to it. So how do we get that message out?
Yeah, simply, I think from my experience in my job training, I've worked on a lot of different programs. Programs that have involved going out door to door and talking to people face to face at their doorstep. And I think if, you know, people here on the dais were to do that or people from other departments, it gives you folks a lot more legitimacy to say like, oh, I'm here from the city, you know, wanna get to know you. Let me know what you think about the survey we did about Parks and Rec, about the national plan. That way, we could have seen a lot more, what do you call it, responses to that survey. And we could actually get a better idea of what the whole city wants to come out of those parks.
Thank you so much.
One of the goals that you brought forward was to get increased to try to do that, of course. What are some of your ideas of how we could change that goal?
I think the city already does a pretty good job doing online, doing the newsletters through email. I think maybe we can also do like text messages in Spanish and different, in different languages. I think that would help out. I know a lot of folks that don't speak English primarily do text a lot. They use other web media apps, apps like WhatsApp and some other things as well. A lot of this stuff is very, what do you call it, trial and error, you know? So I think there's a lot of lessons learned throughout, you know, our outreach programs that we try to do. So I think if we just go back to the data and see what has worked out and just amplify that, I think we can optimize our outreach with the research that we already have.
Okay, I'm gonna eliminate Stanton Central Park that you skateboard. What's your second favorite park?
I would say the one over here, just because it's nice, it's very clear, you get to see the sun, the sunset. You might find that. The sunset at the end, you know, when the skies are clear, so, and it's just nice. I really like it. It's really open, clear. I like taking brisk walks. I'm a very walking person. I like to stay active, so you can either Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate you. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Rexello Rosa to the podium, please. I want your attendance to be.
I see.
Yes, you can move it comfortably to you. And as long as it's be directly into the mic, it will pick up your sound. So if you just go a little bit far.
Okay.
And we'll start with the council of the parks.
Yeah, can you please explain to me some of the issues that I've seen on parks?
Okay, first, I started Rexello Rosa. I thought I would I guess for me, I don't really go out as much, but I guess for me, it seems like bringing, what do you call it, educating more people about the millennium, the parts around us and promoting it more. and promoting it more so that people actually go. And my first review on it is the park is sort of like the living room of the city and sort of more active, cities more lived. And another good direct result of that is the city feels more safe with more people out there because there's more eyes on the street.
Two-story homes in the Indian community.
Yeah, Serena Way.
So have you visited any of our parks?
Probably the Central Park and the, is that a park?
That's a park.
Center Park, yeah, that one, Center Park.
What have you done in Central Park?
Central Park, I guess, I've done a couple of walks. You know, take my bike there, go around. Cool. When it gets a little warm. And then for the Stanton Park there, we first, I think I moved in around, around 2000. I guess, I still work a job there a bit. But yeah, I've been more into bicycling around lately.
Thanks.
So what would your vision be for our parks for the next five years? What would you like to see happen?
I guess I would like to see this more attention brought towards the parks and awareness through sort of education, promotion, maybe through things like YouTube, Twitter, Facebook, flyers, really to get people aware that, okay, we do have parks that we can use to do stuff.
Can you talk about your background, since, you know, a lot of us may not be familiar with who you are and then why you want to be a Parks Commission?
I'm just, I guess, got arts. But my background is mostly desktop publishing. And yeah, got it, and...
Oh, why would you like to be a Parks Commission?
I guess, because I live here and it's certainly just to find, to follow my own, and have all the parks more accessible, give minor reasons to go out myself, meet people out there. I like the information to be more accessible.
We all have different traits or experiences or abilities. Where abilities are things that you can benefit by being on the recreation or community. Tell me what you're bringing to the committee. How would you help it out?
So we have one. Atheism, I guess I would like, or I guess I've got, I've got the background. Would like to shop. They all have stuff organizing information visually, all things like that. But mostly I think it's sort of, discovered sort of interest in getting myself involved in the that sort of drive to try and sort of push that, try, try new things.
First, is your favorite park?
The one I'm most familiar with is that one, but I think starting to lean toward the Central one. I know that's the newest one, but I always want myself to try and check it out. I don't know how, like. I think, you know, the...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time to see me. Councilor, Mayor, at this time during this portion of the video, I would like towns member Warren, who now sees herself in the dais, Gavin, County Henderson, who complements his. Thank you, Ms. Warren. And then when we're ready, I'll come and call you back. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. John.
Mayor.
If you'd be able to help, you deserve stories.
Hi, can you hear me through your耳机? My name is John Warren, but personally, I'm second in operation to the council. Second in form of capacity. I've been involved with Stanton, the volunteer capacity, going back to Michael Samraji in 2006. And that's what really got me involved in the city. Or I even let Sholler ask, and part is my bare part, but that's just, it's behind us. I always just really love the city. Just the first of standing off for toys, having joined the Stanton Car Show Committee back then. How I can get involved. And I somehow managed to get city in 68 careers to come from all over Southern California to show up here. All by the, having a history for passion, or yeah, passion to history. And 68 anniversary. At that time, I also contributed to creating a mural in Stanton Central Park and served it in capacity again by visitor or layups. Following that, these are my first parks. Issues is newer parks.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask you just to get the mic a little bit closer to here. You can hear it.
I think for the most part, a lot of the parks are in the shade or they're being worked on, such as career parks have some issues that have been long standing for a while and that are actively being worked on. For me, the major priority went forward to be what we do in the home. That part, with, as I... And there, for instance, we should be in the house that explored possibly even dog parks there. But the power company does not like the idea of humans being trapped in cage outlines as a potential outcome. But that's the part for me that's gonna be a big priority. What if DC? It's, it's always kind of just been dead. But I would like to see something other, otherwise I'd love to walk in the park.
Can you please extend to me a little bit more about your involvement in the car show?
Yeah, the Stanton car show, it was again, starting back in 2011. I had been attending the car show for several years, to the point that I actually got involved. And give me a help out. Yeah, so I was involved with several clubs and I was also a working friend in a shop in San Ana at the time. And so not only did I even come in and volunteer, but I was also a vendor at the car show for seven years.
In your questionnaire, you're talking about Eugene Park and South Park of the city. Do you have any ideas on that, where the land would come from?
Yeah, one, one spot that I've always looked at, being able to use the Cowes Oaklot, which currently occupies a small shop, small micro store shop, but the other two-thirds of the property is a gravel pit, which gets used for parking or anything, but you draw a one-mile perimeter from the, let's say, each more toward that, so there's not a single park in that area. And same can be said going down to the city. But extending outside the borders of the city, from that area, there's no parks apart from. And you can't walk across the three ways to access parks in this district. So that, that area. Being able to develop that lot, maybe it was a little double in the fact of apply some security because that property actually is, gets used in odd ways. And I think that's one of the things. But that lot can take care of it.
I know that you've served on the Parks Commission quite some time. What do you think is your greatest contribution to that commission and what value do you bring?
I think you have to be something smaller, but I think it's, at the time I had said that was issued the law over six February and the year of the year. And I'll still attest to that. And I'm happy that that item has now been budgeted, which should be running for council. I mentioned, so we're capable of different ways where we can get that community involved. My volunteers in the stands have started to be able to scale. And for those, what kind of options I could bring in front of people. I'm taking classes, I'm a skateboarder now, and just the other day I was talking to a student and he's heard similar volunteers in the city of Portland that actually means for today a city employee for both. And so that's what I really hope to do, is that idea giving back. But on top of that, there's been an incredible amount of work that's been accomplished by the department over the last several years. They're helping people through COVID. And stretching beyond means the department couldn't have imagined. It's hardly, that, that's one thing I have to say, I'm hardly proud of. From the department commission side, we didn't have as much to do with that, but I'll have to say that's really impressive.
And you, I believe you're the campus member on the Parks Commission. And you've been involved with the city, like broader youth. I'm very impressed that you're able to engage someone at such a young age, continue to take engagement.
I'll have to, I need to say, about who's the one first on commission?
There you go.
John, you've been on the commission for four years and you have never estimated. So when we commit you on that, you may all join in. Also, being the chairman of the commission, give me two or three things that you've accomplished while being chairman that you should, what you tried?
One I most rather was being able to get everybody a voice on the commission. It's just like speeding up right here, right now. Just take some newbies, sitting up there where you're at, do some newbies, or move. Like they be taught. Or do members in, existing persons being feeling comfortable, express themselves and that they're allowed to be in the city. Other than, other than that, that what I, one of the things I tried doing was looking to what ways we were capable of being able to initiate items on the commission. And I was saying, in almost every leadership role, one of the first things we needed to grab at is everything you can take control of. And so giving everybody an opportunity to lead and finding the boundaries of what our commission allows us to do, that was, that was two of the work that's been...
One of the things that I think would improve all our commissions is communication between the city council and our staff and the different commissions that we have, the planning commission, Parks and Rec, public safety, or some of the other volunteers. I think that's one of the things that we have not done very well over the years. You being chairman, what, how would you try to develop a program or sub-program? Well, we could maybe have you come in, meet, talk over what you've accomplished, listen to what your needs are, or some kind of report. I think that's very important. And then also, we as a council, where do you think we can do?
On the first part, I've actually had these discussions with the second park about where, when the Parks Master Plan comes out, I believe that'd be a wonderful opportunity to be able to bring the commission in and have that one-on-one conversation with council through a joint session. In prior COVID, the idea of having joint sessions with council was something that was actually assumed that it could be maybe anyone kind of there. So if that happens, that's awesome. With council is another thing that helps to learn a little more of the commission. In terms of what can council do for commission? I think right now, our position is to be able to provide the advice. And the best thing you could do for us is to let us know what we can do for you.
I think it's, I think it's good that we, what I would like to see is information reports from your meetings. Not so much detailed, but things are required. I never, I never get any requests from the committee on things that we can do to help your committee or to help the city. I think we're lacking in that area. I think it's the responsibilities of these committees, even though they're advisory, to reach out to us and let us know what we need to do to make the city better. I mean, you're a group of individuals that we appointed with the role to oversee certain aspects of our community. If we don't get recommendations from you and mine, or we don't get reports from you telling us what we need to do to do a better job, then I think we're, we're missing the point. And so in the future, and I'll speak to whoever ends up on these commissions, don't be afraid to, you know, send this information to a lot of people to let us know what we can do to make our community better. Some people have done that, but I think we need to do more of that so that we have insight and a better understanding. And you are the people that we selected to give that message. Thank you, John.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, I am Mr. Warren, and this is your time. I just have to interject because I don't want any of the Parks and Recreation Commission members here to feel bad. We do have a process. Ms. Bibadia has been directing the Parks and Recreation Commission to provide input that's going to come to the council as part of the main budget workshop. They have actually reviewed and prepared a list with fiscal estimates. And I will be presenting that to the council in conjunction with all the other priorities that are up for your consideration so you can understand everything that's before you with this one impact, what you would have to give out to a group. So I just didn't want the commission to feel that they hadn't been doing that because they have been. And we need to channel their efforts into a very strategic way to present to the council all at once instead of piecing up.
Yeah, I'm not talking about those types of reports. Those reports, we always put on the show. Reports that, the reports that I'm talking about are personal things. You know, if you go in the park and you see that the pole didn't have penny, I know that you tell Zindi and Zindi will let us know. But there are some things that are out there that you hear from the community that we probably don't hear. I think it's important for us to have that extra force. And we have probably one of the best community recreation development programs in Orange County as far as I'm concerned. The programs that we have are second to none for what we do. We don't have a big staff, we don't have a big budget, but we've gone some pretty good size extravaganzas. I'm just saying that... I'm just saying that it's more of keep your ear to the wall and don't be afraid they kind of notice how much is going on. And I think it's called transparency and open communication. That's all I'm asking for. Sometimes people call me about something wrong with the park. I'm sure that you're aware of it because we've talked about many things over the years. But I just want to say to any of the commissioners that we always have an open door and an open ear with our five board members here. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that concludes the interview portion of the political process. We are again, as a reminder, filling five vacancies this evening. And I will now proceed with the nomination session in the process.
Can I, can I ask a question before we do the nomination? I noticed that one of the applicants applied for two different commissions.
Correct.
Can you elaborate how that works? If they get selected, do they get interviewed at the same time or are they completely out of?
They are out. We only allow our commissioners to serve, our committee members to serve on one order of time. So if they are appointed to the parks and they accept that appointment, they will no longer be eligible for the next commission.
Would it be possible for us to ask that individual which one they prefer before we make the appointment? Is that an opportunity?
So at this time, we do have, I would be unable to give one gentleman an opportunity as he's at his age. However, Mr. Tran, if you are selected to be a commissioner for the parks, that would exclude you from the planning commission. So what is your preference this evening?
That's what I would like to say, thank you for asking, asking that question. My preference would have been the planning commission. However, both of them are important to me, that's why I'm happy with both. Yes, and I respect and agree that commissioners will only hold one post. If chosen, I would rather be the planning commission.
So if he's being selected for our Parks and Rec, then he won't be interviewed at the time?
Correct.
He wouldn't be able to choose it, right?
Correct. So unless, if you are selected and you decline that post and we appoint someone else to fill that seat, you will lose your opportunity to be a Parks and Recreation Commissioner. Even if you're not selected to serve on planning, then that is that risk, that you're pushing. You do have to take one applying for both. Do you have a question regarding that process?
So can you tell how many openings we have and who's picking? I think we might would like to know that.
So currently, we have five vacancies, vacancies on the Parks Commission. We have seat number one, which will be filled by the council member Taylor. Seat number two, by Mayor Schaubert. Seat number three, by council member Torres. And then for the Parks Commission, there's a little bit of a difference is that we have two seats six and seven, which is a mayor's appointment for the position of the mayor. So Mr. Schaubert has two seats as well. So at this time, I would like to begin with seat number one, council member Taylor. How would you like to proceed with your motion, sir?
Is this who I choose?
Yes, sir. This will be your motion.
I'm going to choose Mr. Warren.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing that, Mr. Schaubert. Well, now, congratulations to John Warren, you're filling seat number one with Taylor. So at this time, since we have that portion filled, I'd like to invite back council member Warren to the dais in the council chambers. If you can allow me to like to get dressed. Thank you, and welcome back, Ms. Warren. At this time, we proceed with seat number two, Mayor Schaubert. Your motion for appointment?
Mr. Heinz.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Congratulations, Mr. Gray Heinz, for filling seat number two for Mayor Schaubert. Over that. At this time, we proceed with seat number three, council member Torres, your motion?
Mr. Pavia.
Do we have a second for Mr. Pavia?
Second.
Mr. Pavia, you are filling seat number three for council member Torres. Welcome aboard, you'll be hearing from our director in a few days' time. And now we proceed with seat number six, Mayor Schaubert, your motion, sir. Oh, excuse me, all in favor for Mr. Pavia?
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing that, and also for Mr. Heinz. All in favor for Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Any opposed? Mr. Schaubert? Mr. Schaubert, any opposed for Mr. Heinz? What's go for Mr. Heinz? All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Schaubert, your motion for seat number six for the mayor's appointment?
Yes, Ms. Van, please.
Oh, Ms. Van, excuse me, I heard Ms. Dan. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Any opposed? Hearing that, congratulations to this guy, welcome back. There you go. Mr. Mayor, others. She did, however, she wasn't here for the election. It is a requirement, it's a requirement to be able. Unless, unless there's the council consensus to waive since she is applying for her. So at this time, we have Mr. Tran, Mr. Rosa.
So we have Ms. Lynn.
We have Mr. Homon Tran, Ms. Lauren Berlin, which you have to waive the interim portion, and Mr. De La Rosa.
Excellent.
Not putting a low, she had confirmed with me.
That she wasn't going to be here?
Yes. However, since she is applying for her appointment, council does have the authority to waive the interim portion of the process for her, which will make her eligible.
Well, yeah, well, yeah. I was just going to say, I, I strongly feel that would be a really good thing for us to keep Melin on our committee because of her involvement in our community. She, I recall that she covered our city very well as a freelance reporter, but I think she's been to every event that we've ever had since, since the inception of these commissions. So I'm going to go ahead and ask that we consider moving Melin as my number seven. So there's a pretty.
I can proceed with the roll call vote to waive the interim portion of the process for Ms. Berlin. Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Warren?
Yeah.
And I will perform our roll call vote, just to be sure, so we have a motion by Mayor Schaubert, a second by council member Taylor, and now proceed with the roll call vote, council member Torres?
Yes.
Council member Taylor?
Yes.
Council member Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Clinton Van?
Yes.
And Mayor Schaubert.
Yes. And who are, could you, I think I have to go check, who are number four and number five right now?
Number.
Do we have?
Yes.
I think it's good to be, everybody under there.
Desi?
Desi. Ledesma, and then Ms.
It is still on, and?
And so is Desi Ledesma.
Ledesma, okay.
And that would be you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
So at this time, we do have filled and completed the commission vacancies for Parks and Recreation. I do appreciate those who have come to apply and who submitted in their time and their efforts this evening. We do really appreciate your, your time and efforts. Again, we will have openings throughout the year, like we have an extended vacancies as well as when we have elections. Every cycle, your term matches a council member. So we will have two more openings open in 2024. So keep an eye out, and I have it on my list, if there are extended vacancies, I will email you notice list for those positions as well.
On behalf of myself and the council, I would also echo that we we have been volunteered to work in our park programs. And I know a lot of you are very familiar. It's too bad we don't have more commissions because we'd like to have all of you doing something. But in the meantime, please keep your volunteerism. It's very important. That's why the city is as successful as it is because of people like you that take their time to come here and volunteer. Also, thank you for stepping forward and applying. And that, that means something to me, that you do have an interest in our community and serving. So don't give up, keep on volunteering. We'll find something for you to do, trust me. And we appreciate you and your efforts. Thank you, and congratulations. The city is going to do a good job with it. And we'll keep all that program going. I think we have one of the best programs of course size anywhere. And under her leadership, you're going to be in good hands. So thank you, John.
Any other comments?
I just want to quickly say, for those who applied and didn't get accepted, I don't want you to be discouraged. I was in your shoes not too long ago. I actually had applied three times before I was appointed to a commission seat. So don't give up, if you still care and you still want to serve, please continue to stay engaged and apply again. And, you know, if I had given up that for my first time, I wouldn't be able to serve in that capacity if I was serving it now. So thank you so much for taking your time to apply, thank you for caring about our city, and I hope you continue to do the same.
It's that E and the A in the alphabet, that could super stress. Welcome, Ms. Ash.
Thank you.
Good evening.
I will now begin with council member Torres, questions for Ms. Ash?
Yeah, I guess I'll just be answering a question too. What do you see are the challenges and opportunities in the city's future, in the next year? As well as the next five to 10 years related to the planning commission?
The challenges, I feel, well, let me start with more of our accomplishments we've made. I think the south gateway to our city was one of our biggest accomplishments so far for the future. It's nice that you asked me, but the planning commission really doesn't have that opportunity. I would say that I would like to see us continue with finishing our beach boulevard and having our north gateway to the city.
John, how are you?
Mr. Taylor, how are you?
I'm great. Ms. Nash and I served on the planning commission. I was appointed in 2012, I believe, until 2018, when I was elected to sit in council. I really think it was a surprise.
What are your thoughts about the planning commission? What, what do you think we could do to make it better, more interactive with the council?
Well, Mr. Schaubert took my answer, so I'll refer to him. But I know that some cities have their planning commissioners or a representative for the planning commission to come before the city council, maybe once a month, and do report back to, to the council to let them know what we engaged in or problems that we're having. It's open, like you said, open communications. So other than wanting us worried about parking. Not a deal with the developments that come for us.
Universal problem.
Yes, it, yes, not just our city, but yes.
I think you do that.
So I remembered when I first joined the planning commission. I was so new, so nervous, I didn't know anything. And I remember how kind you were, welcoming me onto the planning commission. You were literally like a mama bear, just like, you know, everything's going to be great, you're going to do great. And I really loved how popular it was that you were. And I know that you've served on that planning commission for many years and various different capacities in our city. So thank you so much for your many, many years of service. And I'm so glad that you're applying in this year because I feel like we're having this numerous possibly joining and really need someone like you as an anchor to help guide the proposals and match for them and really help elevate our planning commission and make sure it's successful.
So thank you for the kind words, but really it is my way of getting back. Been in the city of almost 55 years now, and after retirement, I need to have a way to get back to the city. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I don't have any questions.
Oh.
I was 12. I'm excited about the future of our planning commission. We have been in disarray, unfortunately, because our redevelopment department has so much of a turnover within the last many years, the last eight years, nine years. And there's no continuity. And so I think with I'd be happy to have her. She is going to work diligently with the council, but also with you guys. I think that you guys, or you as a commission, need to be better informed, have more say in what's going on, and have a complete understanding so that we are on the same page. And I'm just going to say it, the checkerboard parents of the building on Beach Boulevard is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen in my life. And the fact that we have people living two feet from Beach Boulevard's curb is even worse than that. Now, I'm not saying that's anyone's fault. I'm just saying that we need definitely to get going in that department. And I am so excited about the new, the new renaissance that we're going to have. We have so many.
We'll run out to tackle them.
This town is going to be pretty awesome. Not that we are not proud of the many things that we are being, Brandywine and Thursday Night and all kinds of things. So it's going to be very exciting. And so I'm looking forward to you to continue to work. I'm not going to ask you a lot of questions because I already know how you feel because your heart is in the city and you've always felt that way. And you've always done an outstanding job. So thank you for reappointing, appreciate that too, those of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Ash, I appreciate your time this evening. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. John Tran to go here, thank you.
Good evening, council member.
Mayor?
No.
Are they both the same? Are they both the same?
No, absolutely, it's a separate sound. I can't get into that.
Can you just give them a moment to look over your question? Cam, are you ready, Mr. Torres?
Great. Another question too, where you listed some of the challenges and opportunities. You listed limited land developing vertically, so building up and not out. Can you please explain to me that a little bit more?
So if we look at our geographic limitations, that's even more can grow. But there's always a sky's the limit. With current technology and seismic reinforcement, we will be able to build up and reduce the risk of earthquake because we are in earthquake zone. My background is in civil engineering and I've been working in this country, breaking up collapse. So with that challenge, I can see the same thing with the city when we work with development. I was on a sustainability, but with the current technology, that is going to actually reduce a lot. And with the limit of space, our ability to grow our city, that's the only way to solve because we can't expand. We got the limit, but growing it at a pace and under the condition where it provides a safety aspect for the resident. But give us that opportunity to grow the city so that we can sustain what we have and continue to attract talent, attract business, bring people to us. They don't necessarily live in our city, but if they shop in
Based on your skill set, what strengths would you bring into the planning commission?
Mine, I have an engineering mind, so everything is kind of analytical. And I'm sorry, that is not the only thing that the commission need. But that's my number one strength, is ability to analyze, see a problem, and consider an alternative solution on what can we do to compromise based on the limited resources we have and come up with an alternative solution. It may be not the best, but an option out there for us to explore, to learn more. And from that, we'll come to a compromise because extreme approach doesn't solve our problem. So my willingness to work, to facilitate, to offer alternative solutions.
And the value of our residents, did you tell me a little bit on that?
I am a person that, I love history and language. So my involvement in the multi-language program is important. And I am also on the board for the Beverly Heritage Museum with this deserving heritage of the Beverly Refuge. So to me, heritage is the root of the people. So I may settle in the city less than 20 years, but a lot of our residents have been here a long time. So that attachment, we cannot negate that. So it's always a respectful approach to ask them to consider what is the ultimately the most important part of one result. You may have historical structure at Beach Boulevard. So for that, we need to consider what is it for those long-term residents, what's important to them? Because without them, I didn't have opportunities to reside here. So that the respect we need to show and they still continue to be an anchor in our community. So consider their priority. I mean, we cannot take care of all of that need, but what are their priorities? And can we compromise, come up with a solution where we can still preserve the most important priority to them or continue to develop and grow our city? Thank you, sir.
One of the issues that builders and cities are having now is everybody wants us to be sustainable. LED lighting, the initial installation is expensive, even though you're cutting your energy bill by 50% after that. But that upfront cost is prohibitive in a lot of situations. How would you, as a planning commissioner, talk to the builders that are trying to cram every inch of occupancy on every piece of land they have and save every dime they can to maximize their profit, but to keep looking at them for, gee, can we have permeable paving? Can we have, you know, bamboo floors that will help the planning, you know? What's your viewpoint on that?
That, we have to bring in creative thinking, we need to consider outside of parks. There are certain aspects and at the same time, building process is one of many approach. So alternatively, a developer comes to us with a proposal. We need to reevaluate what is they can offer to the city because we are representing benefit of the city. They have to represent their company, and profit is one of the things to keep them going. So we cannot say, hey, no profit for you. But where is the compromise? So to me, a compromise solution is always the best solution because we need to carry it long term. So it's given tip. What can we give them to give them that will be profit as acceptable to their board, to their investor? But at the same time, to compensate for that compromise we offer them. And if this, the first option may not always be the best one. We just need to look and see, and there are, what else can we offer? And like I said, my LED light 10 years ago were very expensive. But now it's get to a point it's very affordable. So first adopter may not be the best adopter because even if it's going to a lot of money because upfront, R and D investment they need to recoup. So may not be is the best approach for us to pilot in technology. We observe and see A, B, and C, how did they integrate those technologies? But as we learn from that without investing our initial seed money in them. So I always would ask a developer, so what are the three possible solutions you can give me? And I may not pick the best solution if it's financially risky.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are you aware of any present or future conflicts and interests that you might have any development or anything like that that we should be aware of?
I don't operate any development company and I don't associate with any group or organization regarding development. My background is in engineering, but my heart and soul has been in cultural preservation and heritage. So I don't believe there's any comfortable interest on that.
And do you see any instances where you may have to recuse yourself or voting on any issues or any development in our city?
Obviously, yeah, we remove that. And like I say, I don't have a better interest, financial interest, or even friendship relationship with any developer currently or I don't engage in any business in our city.
Thank you. No further questions.
The state of California now loves things called ADUs, which are drawing in and saying we add into homes. Do you support ADUs in residential neighborhoods? If you do, why? And if you don't support ADUs in residential neighborhoods, why?
That is probably the toughest question. That we can offer to the city as a commission to solve a problem that every city is facing is the need for housing. So ADU is one of many opportunities you can explore. But it may not fit for every single lower community within that block. Maybe it's fit for that block, but you go down the street, it may not. So we cannot, and my preference, never do a blanket decision on the city itself. So to answer your question, you may not happy with the way I'm answered, but it's going to be depend on the geographic location and the need of those residents, the resident within that geographic location. What is it that they want? Because we are not dictating. And for that, we need to be able to listen to them, see their concern, what's at their need. And at the end of the day, we need to pick and choose based on their preference and balance that need. So to answer your final, I don't know, it's just a direct answer, but I'm saying ADU is one of the many possible solutions to solve our housing crisis, but it's not the only solution.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions? Appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
On February 8th, that's a big seat of the 10, he was not able before the this meeting. He is currently out of state with the pre-planned connect. He did submit a letter in lieu of his interview. So before you, if you have a chance to take a look at that as well as his question.
I have a question on Jeffrey Jones. He was living in Cross Point?
Correct.
And he moved. Do we know where he moved to?
Interesting. I am unaware of where he currently resides. So that's something, usually we'll follow up.
He's on the board as well. He's not on the board anymore and he moved to
I have a question that's unable to ask at this time. He states that he does currently still live in Stanton. If he is appointed, that's something that we would require approval since he no longer verified. But one of the options is to verify his registration status. And knowing that information, he will ask for a copy of his driver's license to show proof of residence. So at this time, to our knowledge, he still currently resides in our city.
I got a couple of calls on that.
Okay, I will make note. So at this time, I will conclude that portion for Mr. Jeffrey Jones. And I'd like to invite Mr. Mike Pierce to leave in, please. Good evening, Mr. Pierce. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for moving that microphone. I'll start the questioning with Mr. Donald Torres.
What are some opportunities to see our city happen in the future?
I see opportunities for growth. I think we discussed this during our citizenship campaign, but I know that the city has plans to grow Stanton downtown. So Stanton downtown will be the area between Catalan and Cerritos along the beach. And I look forward to seeing that grow.
Right here, you listed water conservation on the second question.
Correct. Can you please elaborate on that? I know that there's a lot of area within the city, which is industrial area. And when I drive by, I see tons of grass there, which I know consumes a lot of water and a bit like the dairies there. And I feel like that could be converted to zero escape and that sort of thing and use much less water. Thank you very much.
What would you bring to the planning commission?
I have about 25 plus years in manufacturing and also operations. So I just have a lot of practical experience in dealing with all sorts of situations. So I've been on operations manager, so you get all sorts of things thrown at you where it's figure this out and make this happen regardless of what it is. So I've had to deal with that most of my career, and so I've earned that kind of experience.
Just on another note, could you state afterwards, I'd just like to talk to you about where you've been doing with things that have improved in that area?
Yes, sure.
As Elizabeth Ash mentioned in her talk earlier, one of the biggest challenges most cities in California are facing is parking. And there just isn't any. And I was wondering if you've got any thoughts or ideas? And then with the advent of the ADUs coming in, neighborhoods that didn't have a parking problem are now having parking problems. And that's on top of everybody else.
Those are two very separate questions, but also present two very major issues.
Yeah.
So I know with the expansion with rodeo 39, which, by the way, I absolutely love rodeo 39. My wife and I go there quite often. However, parking there is a major issue. I don't know if a parking structure or looking at parking structures that will hold more cars with stack and underground parking, I would see that as maybe an option, you know, like the previous candidate mentioned. You know, we can go up, we can even go underground. And, you know, just like the small parking structure out here, instead of spread out over a lot, I think that would make better sense so that you can accommodate. Now, when we go rodeo 39, we go a whole time after, I would say, our time at rodeo 39 is between four and five. After that, we're done because we've gotten there at 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night. And it's drive around the parking lot for 20 minutes until you can find somebody pulling out. That's the goal, you know? So I think maybe looking at something to that. As far as ADUs, and I may be approaching Mr. Mayor Schaller's question. Personally, I'm not a fan. There's multiple ones going up in my neighborhood. If you're building an ADU to house family members or relatives, you know, that sort of thing, that's great. If they're going to be starting to rent them out to multiple people who aren't going to respect our neighborhood, our neighborhood is already a trash dump site on a very regular basis. I had somebody dump trash in front of my own house the other night. They just pulled up, threw it out on the curb and drove off. They do it across the street from my house. Now that's going to become, feel like a regular occurrence. Parking is going to be a huge issue with that as well. So I don't know what's going to happen. Somebody talked about permitting, you know, for the neighborhood. There's large families in our neighborhood, which that's fine, but there's six to seven cars per household where they are literally parking on your lawn, they're parking on the street. And they're taking, and, you know, I would say, some of these people have six to seven cars and there's only three members of the household. So I wish I could understand.
I appreciate that you actually attended the council meeting. I think that's wonderful and not many folks here who are not sort of even on how to be more engaged and serve our city. I'm going to ask you the same question as the previous candidate. Are you aware of any present or future conflicts and interests that should you be selected to serve on the planning commission?
That would work, you know?
And are there, do you see any reason why you might have to recuse yourself or any sort of decision making?
No, none of them are.
Thank you so much.
If, you know, you're pretty familiar with our open land that we have in Stanton. We have very little, but there are some open spaces. Where do you see going there?
We're not too high on the I'm very familiar with as much open land as there should be. So maybe you can enlighten me a little bit or? So maybe you can enlighten me a little bit or?
Okay, let's see, we do have a portion.
A rural area, maybe, you know, more industrial buildings, but we have plenty of those that are open and vacant. So I think those could be, you know, I know that we have some open land right here in the corner where there was a Conroyist, and then next to it, wherever the golden stair was, it would be nice to see some more restaurants come in, you know, or other businesses. It could provide employment for people regardless of what that business is.
Thank you. Also, Mike, I want to thank you for being the eyes and ears of Stanton.
I can see a lot of misuse developments there, potentially attracting a lot of quick-service restaurants where we can get people in and out quickly, generate sales revenue, provide employment, and also take advantage of its geographic nature with the wide streets.
Thank you. And what are some challenges that you see?
Some of the challenges I see are the state's housing mandate to increase the number of units for residents. Mayor Schardler mentioned the ADUs and granny flats. I am a proponent of ADUs subject to its location and ample parking availability for residents. I believe some of the opportunities also include rising costs of construction, material and labor. So those are opportunities for us as, or for the city and the planning commission to come together, come up with innovative ways to overcome rising costs.
How long have you been on the planning commission?
I have not been on the planning commission.
Okay. I'm just going to just let you get this. What do you see as some of the opportunities other than Beach Boulevard for the city?
I do know that there are areas where there's homelessness. In front of my house, I should do some. But I think if we work with the county and other nonprofit agencies, that's something that's relevant to the state, and it's an opportunity for us to get help for those who need help or are willing to help, and also to help the residents feel comfortable and safe where they live and work.
And where abouts in the city?
All right. Quartering the garden roses.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have Sam's Club that's sitting there empty. What would you like to see there and why?
If we could get a big box retailer, that would be ideal. Typically, they will invest in long term. Sam's Club is a, is a big, major retailer. We want to have somebody who has the capacity to market themselves and attract models and their business plans to differ. So I would, I would first invite them over for an open discussion, networking with developers and leasing agents to see what would be a good fit. If we can't get a big box retailer, maybe break it up, maybe a, something similar to your rodeo 39, where we have open space, maybe an open office where independent contractors can rent an office, rent a conference room to future changes.
Another question. I'm just going to run this by you. We just, we have a huge parking problem. What, what are your thoughts very quickly about parking in cities? Because we've
implement a plan where we introduce parking structures with developers. They're doing commercial projects where, you know, maybe a couple stories to help accommodate. I think that will give a viable solution for commercial settings. I could, the department, the commission, see what's feasible, what's not feasible, and get there and put, and go from there.
Same question of the others. Are you aware of any present or future conflicts of interest?
No current present or, no current conflicts of interest. Potentially, there could be because I do reside in the city. But I think I've
I noticed in your application that you're the president of the West Administration for Commerce. How did that happen, you know, living in Stanton? Is that where you do business or how are you involved with that?
So I accepted a job position in 2015 in the city of Western Street. I was the ranchman to engage in the community, being that as part of my job. The Chamber of Commerce was a natural partner. Volunteered my time there, and I was the member, was nominated to be a treasurer of the chamber, and then eventually became president. I currently own my own business in Western Street, but I do reside in the city of Stanton since 2017.
I'm a bit worried, but we have a Stanton business line. To kind of make the Stanton business line more active, more supportive of our businesses.
My recommendation for any organization would be first, you know, reach out to your internal partners, see if there is any opportunities where you guys can work together as a common objective or common goal. And from there, coordinate with where you're trying to go, you know, what's your vision, where you're trying to achieve. Outline goals and find resources and partners that can help you achieve that. Usually, we work with state agencies. For example, we worked with the Alcoholics Beverage Control when they implemented the new We were proactive about it, and we had them come as a guest speaker at one of our events, get them engaged with our members.
First of all, thank you for the thought. And what qualifications would you, or do you have for the planning commissions as number one? And some of the, what are some of the strengths that you can bring in the commission?
Well, I have limited experience in planning. I do have some experience working for a real estate developer back in 2007, I'm sorry, 2006. I did resign from that position in 2007 due to the financial collapse. But my qualifications, I believe various departments such as underwriting, appraisal, house, home inspectors, escrow agent, title agents, and they all kind of work independently, but we're trying to achieve a common goal. So what we do is, you know, work together. We have deadlines to meet, close escrow in time and manner, and we follow the guidelines set by the lenders. So being able to work with various departments and achieving a common goal is one of my strengths. And I think that's something that can translate over into the planning commission.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I so appreciate your time, David. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Thomas Adams to the podium. Mr. Adams? We can get him on the line here. He did submit a letter in lieu of interview, and depending on how he felt he was going to try to make it, it looks like he didn't have a whole time to hopefully hear us. Mr. Adams?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Adams, I'm going to have to ask you to at least shut down either your video portion or your home portion. It looks like there is a feedback when you have two devices locked in at the same time in close proximity to each other. Mr. Adams, if you want to try that again for me? And order file and participate in the video. Go ahead and try one more time here in the air.
Yes, yes, yes. I can't turn on the lights.
Depending on council, we can proceed to read his letter in lieu of interview since we are having troubles, or we can try to see how, I don't think that this is going to be a successful attempt. He logged out of one of his, should try again. Mr. Adams, go ahead and enter and try one more, please.
All right. How's that? Better?
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Adams?
It's not coming up. Sorry, it's not coming up. You can't hear me. All right. How's that? Better? Can you hear me?
So at this time, we do have his letter. He is currently seeking reappointment. So if we had time to read that letter and his questionnaire, we can proceed with the either reading his in lieu of portion of the process. Would you like to proceed with that? All the mayor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Schaubers? You have the in lieu of portion, hearing them? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can produce the in lieu of portion for the appointment process. Currently, we do have three vacancies available on the planning commission. At this time, I will start with seat number one, which belongs to council member four. Mr. Taylor, motion on who you'd like to appoint to the emergency?
I'm very pleased to appoint Elizabeth Dash.
I'm very pleased to second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, congratulations.
That's all right. That happens all the time.
To reappoint Thomas Adams.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing them, congratulations, Mr. Adams. If you can hear me, you've been reappointed to seat number two for Mayor Schaubers. We'll now proceed to seat number three, Councilmember Torres.
Yeah, I would like to be Mr. Tran.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Schaubers? Hearing them, congratulations, Mr. Tran. You're here, fill seat number three for Councilmember Torres. Congratulations to our appointees, and again, same, same, same expressions for thanking for your time here. We appreciate you. As Ms. Taylor had said, please do not give up, but participate, reapply, and hopefully we'll see you again.
I'm going to come down. Again, it means that you care about the city. And if you've ever been to our training, our classes, please keep volunteering. That's what we learn important to us. We may be having some openings in the near future, so stay tuned. And you will get, you will also notice that what you, what you said tonight does squeeze out with us, and we understand some of the things that you, you just do. So again, thank all of the candidates for planning, and I encourage you to reapply. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, I will now begin with the in lieu of portion process where the public safety can be. At this time, I'd like to invite Daniel Park to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mayor Schaubers and councilmembers and staff. Thank you for having me.
Councilmember Torres, questions for Mr. Schaubers?
Awesome, yeah. Please introduce yourself to the rest of the council.
Sure, yes. My name is Daniel Park. I am a pastor, church here in Stanton. We've been here for a pleasant time, but recently we just had to change, change our name and kind of did a replant of our church. And now it's called Stanton City Presbyterian, potentially trying to be more involved in the city of Stanton, if that's our desire. And part of my passion is to be not just a church that I serve, but also to be able to be involved in the city. And so we've been trying to be involved with different organizations. Previously, another location, Cerritos and Western, but unfortunately we had to leave that area because the Stanton Center Park was built in that place. It's unfortunate for you, it's wonderful, wonderful for you, you all, because the park is so wonderful for the community there. But my passion is really for reaching out to the community and the city of Stanton. And so this last year, last year, I decided it was, we tried to work it out sooner, but fortunately we weren't able to, but we finally moved to Stanton ourselves. So we don't want to just be a church that's serving here and going back to our neighborhood, but we want to actually be in the city of Stanton. So that's who I am, that's why I'm passionate to be in this position to be applying for this public safety.
Awesome. Is there any issues that you see with that proposition?
I'm going to say that this is my first time applying. I'm still in the past previously with prostitution and with massage parlors and things like that. And I know that that is a public safety concern. Do you have, and I have talked to residents in the past, people in my neighborhood, homelessness is obviously a big one. When I come to city council meetings, that always tends to be a conversation that we have. So I know that's also a safety concern, I suppose.
So as you stated here on question two, you said that a lot of conversations come up with local residents, and I imagine members of your church were some things like?
About homelessness? I mean, that's the one I wrote about, which was homelessness. That is a concern that I'm sure many people have. It's always a health subject. I mean, we're not, it's not just a material, we're dealing with human being. I mean, we're not, it's not just a material, we're dealing with human being. complicated issues because we're dealing with humans. And so sometimes people might be homeless because of drug use and they can't sustain their job or their life. And so they're homeless, others because of maybe mental illness, at times it could be because they're addicted. And the housing market is really hard and difficult for so many people. And I think those are very complicated issues. So I think for myself, I would say that I think because we're dealing with human beings, I would be someone who would want to work in the committee to see how we can get other people involved, whether it be the sheriff department and city council members and different organizations like churches and residents and partnering together, collaborating together to see what are creative ways we can go about to sort of work through the situation. Because I think another hard thing is in another city, I'm sure that sometimes maybe others push homelessness into our community. And so it's so complicated there. And so that's sort of how I envisioned sort of my, if I was to be a city councilor or sort of part of the time. Say, public safety committee member, that would be that my kind of initial conversation is, can we have dialogues with the city council members? Can we have dialogue with the sheriff department? Can we have dialogue with businesses and residents in the city because we are dealing with human beings and all?
Um, how long have you been with the city?
So it's been about a year now. Very fresh in Stanton.
I'm aware.
We're almost there too, so. And very close to home, I think.
Thank you. Could be public safety type of issues that would be to address?
I mean, one of the things that I would say that I have seen is certain areas where I feel like lighting is dimmer or non-existent altogether. I have heard studies that lighting definitely does help, especially nighttime. Hollow Park, for example, is one area I don't necessarily see a lot of lighting at. I have members of our church who say they're really scared to walk during that part in nighttime. So that I think would be an area that I think can be some of the, the public safety concern. Another thing I always hear residents and when I come to city council is the constant remarks of fireworks. That's always a big one, right? And so we see that on a regular basis. So that's another concern that I've heard in time.
And what's your church doing?
We're looking in daylight.
We talked about homelessness. We know it's a huge problem. What other things are you seeing in Stanton as far as lighting is a big one? There's so many studies saying the better the lighting, the safer you are. What other things do you see in Stanton that we could work on from a safety perspective?
I think I'm still so fresh in Stanton. And so I think my hope would be that the first year would be more just observation, trying to be more intentional. I think being able to be in a position where I can actually get more involved with the city will be conducive for me to kind of understand how does Stanton work. And so my first, I would want to plan on and observe. So I'm not too sure any other situation that I think is a public safety concern right now, other than just people telling me they, they're, the fear of homelessness, the fear of maybe drug use, the fear of gangs, maybe and violences, those are things I hear, but I haven't necessarily seen it myself, some of these issues. But so I haven't observed any real public safety concerns as yet, but hopefully if I was to be picked, that I would be able to walk around and be more intentional of seeing what's going on in the neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm surprised to see you so modestly saying, oh, I'm so fresh when you've been surveying as a pastor in our community for so many years. So I don't want you to sell yourself short. I know that, you know, as you volunteer regularly at the events, so I do want to intentionally acknowledge that. So thank you for that, Pastor Park, for continuing to engage your church members with our city and being a contributing member. So I think that for public safety in our city, one thing that I, I see in a struggle with is getting certain communities to speak up when they see something. Fear of retribution or fear that, you know, maybe if they say something about somebody, they'll get retaliated. Do you have suggestions on how we can maybe to speak up and voice our concerns when there's a public safety issue?
Yeah, a lot of people are reticent of this. I wonder if a lot of there would be, I mean, just my initial thought right now is maybe more engaging with the community, building a trust. I'm looking at this from a outside perspective, so I don't know if many of the staff of Stanton, the council members, if we're all involved, if the sheriff departments involved. I'll just get into those spaces of thirty-seven thousand residents in Stanton. That's small, that's still a lot of people. And I think there are many residents here that I have met for the first time. I've been serving in different capacities here at Stanton, never seen them. So I think part of it is just going to be constantly be familiar with the residents and faces, constantly involved with being, um, what trust by just being present. That would be maybe a solution I can think of right now, in terms of just having more residents, be able to trust when the police department, the city council members.
Thank you so much.
Hey, you know, Mr. Park, it's been a while. I'm glad you're back. Anyway, um, could you tell us some of the strengths that you've been bringing to the commission? You know, some of the, I know you but then how would you take that information and bring it into a working situation?
I think some of the strengths that I bring would be, you know, people person, being able to talk with the residents, be able to go around and try to be a person who can collaborate people together, unify people together. That would be a strength that I would hope to bring. And I think part of it is just being, being with it for ten years, or thirteen, fourteen years, a church and working in different neighborhoods here. Just being able to have a passion to care for the city of Stanton. Those are things I feel like, and just maybe even being, being fresh in maybe that energy and that excitement, maybe will be able to bring some strength to the public safety.
Thank you.
If there are no other questions at this time, in the council? And at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Jeffrey Jones to the podium. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Kenneth Bloom to the podium.
My name is Kenneth Bloom. I've been a resident of Stanton for twenty-nine years. And I've also been on the Citizen Academy two different times. And Gary, I'm in New York district. I live at the Bradford Homes.
And Mr. Bloom, you're welcome to move that microphone closer up to you. It's memorable, so you don't have to stand. Perfect. What a good setup for you. Mr. Torres?
Awesome. I definitely remember you from our public safety, I mean, Citizens Academy.
Yeah.
That was actually really cool.
It was cool too, man. I learned a lot in both of them.
Right.
Especially the second one, I mean, the second one, I was actually, the first one was online because of COVID.
Kevin, you announced. So what are, I'm still just curious about what happened.
You know what? Main thing is, this is going to be a learning experience for me. I've learned a lot in the Bradford Homes, talked to people. And I'm willing to learn and listen. And I think I bring the street knowledge, what people want and need from the city and from the police department, fire department. And I'm a very strong supporter of the police department and the fire department. I believe that whatever they need, they need to get, they need to have and get.
And you're being an active participant in our city.
And then another thing too is, you know, I just like to make sure that the police, we have enough police and fire that have enough living up on the streets to be, you know.
Since you've lived in Bradford condos or townhomes, have you seen a lot of, I guess I'm going to say crime, criminal activity?
You know what? No, it's, we're very lucky, I think. You know, I don't see very much crime at all. Only thing we've had lately was a couple of major fires in there. And that's about it. I mean, I think everybody watches out for themselves pretty good, everybody.
In the past, we've heard of incidents over, for the Sunshine Village of Western, I think it is.
Yeah.
That there's been homeless people coming in there and stealing things.
Yeah, the only problem I've saw, I think, was the drainage over there in Western. I mean, that, that's done by the county. And they were having, we were having some problems, people going in there digging in the trash cans and all that, but that's all they were doing. As far as crime, I think about any kind of crime also there.
Yeah. Glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Stans, they're so loyal to Stanton. I love that place.
That's where my son works.
Haven't told the management we're a hundred percent.
He's there in the mornings, at least to three.
So, public safety, Home Depot's getting hit really bad too.
Yeah.
Hopefully the gentleman that raised the, um, step from four hundred for shoplifting to nine hundred. And now we're going to put it back down to four hundred because guess what? It worked.
I, I know, I know about the budget or what, but maybe get a policeman to stop there once in a while or smarten fine and just walk around, make themselves known ones. In there.
My, my question I was going to pose to you is, is that police and fire, we love them, but they're very expensive. Our budget for police, it is over thirteen million a year. And so we also have to think out of the box. And so you have the safety of the city, so that we don't have more astronomical hurdles.
Yeah, the only thing I can think of, maybe get more of the community involved. You know, like, I know we have the coffee and cop series, you know, I know the last one got canceled, but, you know, getting the community more involved. I'm retired, I'm more than willing to get involved in our city, you know, walking around, saving the police, you know, fire department. Maybe have the fire department, you know, um, once a week or just maybe go into a business with a policeman and just let themselves be known. Let them know, the criminals know that, hey, our police department, fire department, you're being watched. Maybe once a week or twice, you know, if, I mean, if the budget allows it. But I love the city and I, well, our police and fire department, I want to do everything we can to, that they separate in a week where we can get more people or even in the, in the rural parks or something, maybe have Starbucks, cater some coffee and donuts and pastries and have a police car out there and a fire truck and, and take it that way.
Good ideas. Thank you.
So you see that you've lived in the city for twenty-nine years, so I think you have a pretty good historical perspective of how our city has transformed itself over the decades. Can you comment on what you've seen in terms of the difference in public safety and what has been done over the past forty years?
Well, I was in the jail when state police departments was on their own. And they had a lot of problems. I guess it just didn't have enough. But I think being aware by the county was a very good thing because we can draw more resources from the counties than having our own. We need some more police on the streets, but I know budget don't even allow so much. But I think our, our police do a great job. I really do believe, once I've come across.
I can hear that you're, you're very supportive and passionate about public safety and you're really a big proponent of our police and fire services. However, as, as Councilmember Ford has stated, they are extremely expensive. They take up, you know, a big chunk of our budget. Is there any other way we can increase public safety without needing to add or put down the ground like police and fire, so that we stay within budget and still, you know?
The only thing I can think of, maybe you've done with like police, maybe like have a citizens patrol or a volunteer citizen patrol, you know, that goes around the in the streets, you know, go down the city streets, don't stay on just the main streets, go into the city streets and patrol around. And then, I mean, I'd be open to something like that. And just make, make yourself visible to these criminals. And that way, they're going to avoid those areas because they know they're going to get caught.
Thank you so much.
Could you give us your one strength that you've been bringing to the Public Safety Commission?
Wow, um, you know, I, I ran a grocery, I used, I'm retired from Alpersons, I was a store manager. I worked with a lot of people in the store meetings. My work ethic, I speak for myself, I can remember thirty-five years, my work ethic is like, it's very that kind of attitude, you know, what, what the average person wants in our, you know, wants done in our city. I know I can't make the decision, all I can do is just forward it on to you, to the council and new mayor, but I think that's what my strengths are.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
Okay, thank you.
Your time, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Jeffrey Jones, who is currently not in attendance, however, did submit again a letter and interview. Since he is applying for reappointment for this position, I'd like to request waiting process for Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing them? That includes a portion of the interview process for the public safety committee. We do have three vacancies to fill. I will now begin with seat number one, Mr. Councilmember Taylor, your motion for appointment, sir?
Um, Mr. Daniel Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I have, any opposed? Hearing them, congratulations, Mr. Park, for filling seat number one under Councilmember Taylor. Seat number two, Mayor Schaber, your motion for appointment? Seat number two, Mayor Schaubert, your motion for appointment?
Yes, Mr. Bloom.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Torres on the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very nice. Congratulations, Mr. Bloom, for your appointment to fill seat number two under Mayor Schaubert. And seat number three, Mr. Torres, your motion for appointment?
I just want to stop this on the
Yes, sir. Do we have an option of not appoint him if we wanted to? Or does he have to?
I actually do. I think because there's been information brought to the council that there could be a residency issue, I think it's our responsibility for who we appoint someone, since we don't know that, to take a look at that residency issue, who would make that, you know, would you always do that pending? That's, we could do it. But I think that that's a council majority. I personally am comfortable appointing somebody that has a residency concern if there's been a lot of the attention of the city council.
Mr. Man. So at this time, Mr. Torres, I say get a motion, but you were doing it under the reasons of there was no, but not. So we'll go ahead and resent that motion and we'll proceed with their hiring residency. And do you mind?
I would recommend if they pending, otherwise we won't have to bring this item back. If we make that motion tonight, then we verify it's residency and we will, we will confirm the process that the district DA uses when they get residency complaints, which are the way party to the eight number four, edit application, then that, if they don't meet the requirements that stated, as far as public safety, that would be
I mean, you know, with the point that he had, he has yet to use his form game as well. So.
Second, your motion.
Would you like to keep your motion, Mr. Torres?
No, I think that it would be nice to have a president on there.
So can I confirm that we do not perceive that this would be a
Well, this, the Public Safety Committee would have, without this position being filled, so we could, we could make it at this time, or the council could direct us to reopen the recruitment. And we would go through the same process, reopen it for the same number of weeks we did initially, advertise it just the same we did, depending on the number of applicants who would either be at the council, if you're counseling more than the number of applications to succeed in 10, we like to schedule numbers separate meetings so that
I guess could stand the process.
I just wanted to mention that for whom you didn't get chosen tonight, please apply for public safety, if anything you're at all interested in.
So we're allowed to apply over here?
No, no, when it opens again, please apply, because I will encourage you guys to know that, but we'll be at opening and you can apply and then get another chance to serve.
Looks like it gives Jim a hard time.
If they, before the reopening, you'll be given the same type of notice from me, a copy of the application, and then they'll sign the due dates and that kind of information for our process. So we have a motion by Councilmember Torres, and a second by Councilmember Man to proceed the opening and we're applying against a mission, is that correct? Mr. Man? Now that Mr. Jeffrey Jones does live in Stanton, would you still want to appoint him or you don't want him as an option?
Well, I would
Okay, so have him come in. Got it. So, yeah. So we are going with Councilmember Torres' motion to reopen the recruitment process for seat number three to fill that vacancy, which will follow the same procedures, opening two weeks, notice, and as this see if you can bring that forward during the regular statistics and council meeting. Is that correct? Do we have a second? A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Schaubert, you okay with that, sir? Sorry?
Yeah.
So again, that motion passes. So to those residents that did not get appointed this season, you will have another opportunity to be reviewed for this position in a couple days. So you should scan notice, send your emails, and ask for that. Pass that. Mr. Man, I'll do that for you.
Here are the questions. If I recall, there's always should have our meeting every day from the public to the right of speed. And I, you know, I think that's all my
You're welcome to do that with a special meaning, there's a different format, but I
I just think, I think it's good. Is there anyone attending the meeting tonight that would like to address the city council? Thank you all for being here and have a good day.